The Emeryville Planning Commission to order. Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Here.
Commissioner Moss has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Present.
Vice Chair Flores.
Here.
Chair Donaldson.
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners.
Find me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the commission on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, I will move on to the minutes, the action recap. Anyone have any comments, corrections?
A move approval.
A second.
Without objections. We have the minutes approved without any objections.
I have to abstain from approving or not approving.
Yes, that's right. Commissioner Steinberg was not there, so it'll be four, five ayes, one abstention, and one absent.
Onto the director's report.
First, let me advise you of things that the city council has been doing since your last meeting in April. They've had two regular meetings on May 1st and May 15th, and then this week, earlier this week, they had three nights of budget hearings. At their May 1st meeting, the council passed a resolution confirming their previous comments on the sustainable community strategy and the draft regional housing needs allocation. They had previously discussed that on April 17th, and their comments were passed on to ABAG and MTC. On May 15th, the council adopted the pedestrian and bicycle plan and approved the corresponding general plan amendment, so that project is finished. In doing so, they moved the bicycle boulevard between San Pablo and Adeline Street from 47th Street back to 45th Street. You may recall that the commission moved it from 45th Street to 47th Street after hearing from the chair of the BPAC, and a majority of the commission agreed that it would be better on 47th Street. At the council meeting, several additional BPAC members spoke in support of 45th Street, along with some other public speakers, and the council, a majority of the council agreed that it was better on 45th Street, so now it's back on 45th Street. That was the big issue. Everything else seemed to be fine. The council held a study session on an analysis report and recommendations for the Child Development Center, as well as the Community Services Department's proposed quality improvement plan, and they endorsed those proposals. The council also reviewed our department's RFP process for consultant services for the building division, which includes plan check, field inspections, and administrative services. And that RFP process concluded that we will continue to contract with WC3, and the council approved that concept. We'll be bringing WC3's contract back to the council in June. This is not directly related to planning, but it's something I thought you would want to know about. The council approved a contract with Alameda County to provide fire services effective July 1st. All the fire stations, equipment, and personnel will remain as is, but they will now be operated by the county with oversight from the city. The council also heard a status report on the leak at the AC Transit Hydrogen Fueling Station that occurred on May 4th. As you may know, that leak resulted in the evacuation of several surrounding properties, including Pixar, the high school, and Emery Bay Village, and the closure of San Pablo Avenue between 40th and 53rd Streets for a couple of hours. The AC Transit General Manager told the council that they are assessing the situation and deciding whether and when to reopen the facility. I would note that, as was predicted when AC Transit presented this concept to the commission and the council a few years ago, the hydrogen, which is lighter than air, burned off and went straight up into the sky. It was somewhat spectacular, I guess, but it didn't really cause any serious damage or any injuries. Finally, on May 15th, the council heard a presentation from a group of graduate students from a UC Berkeley Transportation Planning Studio class who presented their ideas on how to align Emeryville's land use and transportation policies with the greenhouse gas reduction goals of SB 375. Earlier this week, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the council heard budget presentations from each department, including yours truly, as well as lots of public testimony, and then they deliberated on priorities for proposed program additions. With the demise of redevelopment, the emphasis in the budget is now less on the city's transformation from an industrial hub and more on quality of life issues. The council will have further discussion on the budget at their June 5th meeting and is expected to adopt it on June 19th. Moving on, I'd like to inform you about the upcoming Planning Commission interviews. The city council will be holding interviews for applicants for the Planning Commission before their regular meeting on Tuesday, June 5th, beginning at 5:00 PM. There are five applicants for the two available seats, and they are Elizabeth Altieri, Brian Donahue, Sean Moss, Rachel Joy Rhodos, and Carrie Tan. And as I'm sure you've all heard, Commissioner Flores is leaving us, is not seeking reappointment because he's moving to Oakland, and we will certainly miss Commissioner Flores. The council expects to make their appointments at the June 19th council meeting. Couple of other items on the zoning update. The Steering Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, June 11th, which is a little less than three weeks, to review several key outstanding issues that the committee previously identified. Unfortunately, I will be on vacation at that time, but the committee will be in the very capable hands of project manager Deborah Diamond and our new intern. We plan to bring the entire code back to the committee in the ensuing months and hold a community workshop later in the summer, and then study sessions and adoption hearings before the commission and council in the fall. Finally, the Center for Community Life held their ninth community workshop this past Saturday, May 19th, at Annie Yates Elementary School, and the next one will be on the evening of Thursday, June 14th, at a time and location to be announced. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
We got an email from an ex-city council member saying that the funds for the Center for Community Life were not going to be available. Is that true?
I'm not exactly sure how this process works, but my understanding is that our Oversight Board approved it, but the State Department of Finance took it off the list.
So that means it will not proceed?
I think the city attorney can maybe clarify this.
Charlie is right. It was denied by the Department of Finance. We're in the process of appealing that decision, and we're also working with Nancy Skinner's office. She's given us some assistance on that particular item. There were other items on the project list that were also denied, but that certainly was one. We believe the Department of Finance is wrong in this case, and we're going to pursue it, so more, it's not done yet.
Any other questions for Charlie? Okay. Well, we have a relatively short agenda tonight. We have one study session. There were two public hearings scheduled, but the fire station is being continued to a later date. Does that have anything to do with the change of who's administering the fire services?
No. It has to do with the fact that nobody from Public Works, who is managing that project, was available to come to the meeting tonight.
Okay.
But they will be available on June 28th.
Okay.
Charlie, I had a quick question, since I have a conflict of interest with the first item, which is the study session, but we're not voting. I don't have to recuse myself, do I?
Why do you have a conflict of interest?
Ratcliffe is the architect for the project.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Then I think you would have to, yeah, I think you would have to recuse.
You will need to leave the room.
Need to leave the room.
Even though it's a study session?
Yes.
Okay. Where do I go?
Charlie.
You can watch downstairs.
Charlie, can you, remember if I voted on Esquela Bilingüe when they came in for their CUP? Did I recuse myself?
Why?
Are you, within 500 feet, I live.
Bakery lofts? I don't, that's more than 500 feet.
Close enough.
I think that's more than 500.
I must have voted on it, yeah.
I think you did.
Didn't occur to me until this now.
You're a long way.
Oh, I'm one block away. It just happens to be a long block.
It's, well, that's what matters, is how many feet.
How long is that block?
It's more than 500 feet.
I believe it is, but I.
Oh, it definitely is. That block is about 1,000 feet long, and you're at the far end of it, so I think you're okay.
Okay, so, Meru, let us know what's going on here.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson, Commissioners. As you may recall, in March of last year, the Planning Commission approved a use permit for Esquela Bilingüe Internacional. Not sure I'm saying that right, so I'm going to say EBI from now on. So, March of last year, the commission approved a use permit for EBI to establish a school from K to 8 in an existing building on San Pablo Avenue, 4550. This decision was appealed, and the council then approved the project in May of the same year. One of the conditions of approval of this project was to create for the applicant to create a path, a pedestrian path connecting between 45th and 47th Street. And there were various conditions which kind of delineated how wide it needed to be. It also said that the commission had to approve the design of the path, and the last condition was that the pathway had to remain open to the public at all times, and we'll come back to this a little bit later. So this is what they have proposed. It's a 50-foot wide pedestrian path along the eastern property line, sorry, 20-foot wide pedestrian path with a six-foot wide pathway, which would be made of stabilized decomposed granite. They are also installing an eight-foot-high fence, and it's shown in red here. I'm not going to go into the various details, as the applicant is here, and will be presenting more details regarding the planting and landscaping. This project was reviewed at the DCC Committee, and these are the following comments. One suggestion was that the tree wells near the drop-off area, which is the drop-off area for the kids here, the tree wells there should be made larger, or the trees should be moved east of the path. There were also comments regarding making the path straighter and wider, so the police could go down if necessary, but the representative from the police department who was present there said that as long as there was clear visibility from both ends, the design of the path was not a problem. It was suggested that the existing lights, there are about six along the path, needed to be checked by the city lighting standards and not be blocked by trees, and if they are found to be not meeting the city standards, then they would need to be replaced. It was suggested that the path at this time did not include any benches or tables, and there was a suggestion that these should be included, along with trash cans. It was noted that there were no gates at either end of the path, just bullets, and since there was no fence next to the northern half of the path where the drop-off area was, this would mean that the EBI's northern parking lot will be open to 47th Street, which could pose a security problem when the school is closed. There was a suggestion that a sign be installed which said pedestrians only, to make sure that bicycles, bicycle riders did not use this path. The building department staff noted that the seismic stability of the existing concrete block wall along the eastern property line should be checked, and that it may need to be upgraded or replaced. A community meeting was held by the applicant in April of this year. Commissioner Cardoza was present, along with council members Asher and Davis. There were two main concerns that were raised. One, the rationale for the path was questioned. It was felt that the path at this location was inappropriate. And the second was that the path posed a serious security issue for the immediate neighbors, as well as for the community as a whole. It was suggested that the gates at both entrances should be constructed, and the path be closed off during the night. So the main issue for you to consider is that we do have a condition of approval that requires no installation of gates unless the Planning Commission approves it, and yet, at the community meeting, there was a strong concern regarding the security of the path, and the suggestion was made that there should be gates and the path should be closed off during the night. So we are requesting that the commission give us comments and direction regarding the design, as well as the issue regarding the gates. If there are any other questions, I would be happy to answer. I'd like to make a note, there were two emails that were sent to you earlier this week. Hard copies are on the desk. One is from your commissioner, fellow Commissioner Moss, and the other one is from a neighboring, a neighbor, Ms. Tan. So these are the two. So the applicant is here for making the presentation.
Any questions, Meru?
Yeah. One of the letters that we received talked about a future plan and a building that could possibly obstruct the path. Do you have any plan or anything that we could see that would show us that?
The applicant has not submitted any plans to the city.
And the prior entitlement is run out for the townhouses. That's all gone.
Oh, yes, right.
Maybe that's.
Yeah, the townhouse entitlements are gone now.
One of the condition of this approval, the EBI use permit approval, was that that entitlement be withdrawn, and they did. So at this time, the entitlements include EBI occupying the entire building. Right now, they're occupying only the first floor.
Okay, well, I definitely appreciate getting the correspondences early this time. It's really helpful to be able to read them. So does the applicant want to present?
My name is John Horch. I serve on the Board of Trustees at Esquela Bilingüe Internacional, which constitutes the extent of my Spanish language speaking ability. I will also refer to it as EBI for the rest of the evening. I serve as the Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and have been working extensively on our use of the building at 4550 San Pablo and on this path. We have brought a significantly smaller and less cute contingent to this meeting this evening than we had last spring, but I just wanted to quickly introduce a few folks because they may be able to assist with answering questions from the commission. Erica Derrick is our Board Vice Chair. Maggie Salip is the Facilities Project Manager for EBI. Rachel Horch serves as our counsel, and we have several of our architects present. Brian Fagin is from Ratcliffe, and Jeffrey Miller and Aaron Parr are from Miller &amp; Company, who have been working as the landscape designers for this project. I know that you all have been exposed to EBI before, but I just wanted to give you a quick, and I'll make this brief, update on us and where we are. Briefly, our mission is to provide an excellent Spanish and English bilingual education based on the highest international and academic standards, in an environment that thrives on diversity, fosters global citizenship, and develops the character necessary to recognize that cultural uniqueness is the touchstone of our common humanity. Just to give you a couple of quick highlights on our history, we opened in 2006 as the first Spanish, independent Spanish and English bilingual school in Northern California. We're currently serving 225 students from pre-K through 5th grade, with plans to extend through 8th grade as our current students age. Just to let you know that we're continuing to progress in our development, we were certified as an International Baccalaureate World School in 2010, and we're just, this past spring, accepted as a provisional member of the California Association of Independent Schools. So the school's doing well and progressing quite in terms of its enrollment and contributions to the community. Meru touched on this briefly, but I'll just hit on it again. This commission granted a conditional use permit in March of last year that was upheld with some conditions by the city council in May. The use permit that we have gives us the ability to expand into the entire building. We're currently using about a quarter of the space, over approximately six years since last spring. We opened our San Pablo campus, what we call the West Campus, in September of 2011 with about 40 students in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades. We are currently in Phase 1 of our use permit, which involves us in, this chart shows the site plan roughly with the building situated. We're using roughly half of the first floor. We'll be using that space, we've been using it this current school year, we'll be using it again in the coming school year. During this phase, we expect to have as many as 88 students and up to eight full-time equivalent staff and faculty at the site. Phases 2 and 3, which were also covered by the use permit, include our use of the entire building, all of both floors. We expect, at this point, to do construction on this space in 2013, between 2013 and 2015. At that point, we would have up to 400 students with up to 50 full-time equivalent staff and faculty at the site. We're here tonight because of the pedestrian path. It's required by our use permit, and we are here seeking approval of the design of that. The use permit specified that the construction of the path was required to be completed before we took occupancy of the entire building, so before our Phase 3 was complete, which we anticipate would be by 2015. We're here in 2012 because we're currently working on site plans and all of the construction documents for that work, and so we would like to have this piece settled so that we can move forward with the rest of our design elements as well. In terms of our pedestrian path, we've been very aggressive in our design, and we're excited about what we've been able to come up with. There are four things that I wanted to highlight, and I'll show you the design in just a second. Safety, the functional and attractive space, a connection to EBI and the greater community, and also sustainability, which is part of the core values of our school. So this is the design of the path in living color. It's a 20-foot-wide pathway with a six-foot, as Meru mentioned, decomposed granite pedestrian path meandering through it. Among the, again, the design elements that we wanted to highlight, safety was obviously a critical one, that we are a school and we are in a neighborhood, and so we want to be very conscious of that. The path has been designed for visibility, both from the school and from the entries, from both ends. There are no shrubs that are part of the plantings. The plantings that we're proposing are taller trees and ground cover only, to maintain visibility and keep away hiding places. The trees that are proposed will be positioned away from the neighboring properties to make sure that we don't get into a situation where they could be used as ladders for climbing into neighboring properties. We've tried to connect the path to the school as much as we can. You'll notice on the northern half, we don't actually propose a fence along the northern half of the path, along the western border of the northern half of the path. Essentially, the path would be open to the existing parking lot, and one of the ideas behind that is to create, again, a larger sense of area and community, less of a corridor, and connect the space to places where more people will be during the day. Finally, the setting of the actual pedestrian path within the 20-foot corridor that's prescribed, we think will help, we've taken into account visibility and other issues to make sure that there are as few blind corners and things as we can get with the space. In terms of creating a functional and attractive space, I've had the opportunity to learn lots of new vocabulary. My newest is arboretum, which is what this path would represent. It's a very wide variety of plant and tree species, which we think will be both a service to the neighborhood, and also, since this is adjoining a school, it's great to have something that can potentially be a resource in the community, both the EBI community and the larger sort of educational community that surrounds our immediate spot on San Pablo. In terms of connectivity to the community and EBI, again, I mentioned the fact that we don't have a fence along the northern part, which will, again, cut down on that corridor nature and connect the space a little bit. We also propose to use the existing concrete wall there as a space for a mural for the school, again, to create, again, an opportunity for some artistic expression, but also to give it a sense of home and more connection. And finally, related to sustainability, all the species that we're proposing are bay-friendly species of plantings and trees, and, again, that's very consistent with EBI's mission. EBI is a green business, certified green business, and takes sustainability, it's a very important core value for our school. So that's the extent of our prepared presentation. We're certainly, again, we have lots of folks available to answer questions.
You know, I think the question that is on maybe many of the commissioners' minds is, and maybe you can't answer it because there's a board and everything, but how do you feel about this path? I mean, I know it's part of the conditions, and without getting into how we feel about it, do you feel like it's a burden, and do you maybe personally feel like it's not needed? I mean, can you kind of answer?
Sure, I can try. We have pursued the design of the path because it is part of our condition. It's unlikely we would have volunteered this space for this path, barring that condition. I think there are elements of the path's location, particularly our property's proximity to San Pablo, that sort of, I don't know, they call into question the need for the path, but certainly, if it was, if our property was more located in a mid-block spot, a path might make more sense in that location. I think one of the things that came up when we reviewed the DCC notes that Meru provided is that the city has received a significant Safe Routes to School grant to make some pedestrian improvements on San Pablo at, I believe, 45th and 47th and 43rd Streets. I don't know exactly what those improvements are, but it certainly occurs to us that perhaps combining that grant with support from EBI that might otherwise be directed towards this path could result in some very creative and more substantial improvements to the pedestrian experience on San Pablo. We haven't explored that, again, because we're. We haven't explored that, again, because we're trying to make sure we get the design approved, but we're certainly open to those types of discussions.
Thanks. I have just a couple more. The open parking lot where it opens up, is there a rationale that there's an 8-foot wrought iron gate or fence and then nothing, besides the fact that you want an open community and everything? And how do you propose to secure basically your property?
Sure. Well, we do propose a new gate, a new fence on the site, essentially a parallel to the southern border of the existing building, so that the, what we consider the south lot, the southern half of our-
Can you point to that? Is there a way to point to that?
Yes, I can. Right here, sorry.
Thank you.
So, the gate, the fence that we would install along here would extend across with new gates here, with this area to be designated as our primary parking spot, and this area as our play and overflow parking. So, this would be, we could open this, but this would generally be closed to day-to-day access in that way. In that way, we've secured the students. Our main, and I think our general feeling, the existing fence and car gate that's along 47th Street would continue to be there, so there would not continue, there wouldn't be any vehicular access to the lot, except in a controlled way like it is now. It's a mechanized gate with a code that parents and our tenants use to access the site at this point. So, we expect that would continue, so vehicular access wouldn't be an issue. I think, in general, we weighed the safety concerns of having a more open space to the benefits of minimizing a corridor effect, you know, a block-long corridor effect that we thought this tied in together. We also like the idea that the traffic flow on our site, and I think we can, I've shown, this is shown on the drawing, this is sort of the imagined drop-off path, but not having a fence also allows the EBI community to make use of the path as a way for students to make their way into the building once the path is constructed. So, again, with the idea that more people on the path makes it a more valuable resource and means, I think, more people makes it safer, more people makes it more useful to the community, and so.
Could you speak to the mural and where that's proposed to go, and what's there now, maybe?
I'm going to defer to a colleague for that answer. Thank you.
So, the mural is, where's my, it's right, we propose to put it right in this zone, oops, what did I do?
Oh, God.
Thank you. No, touch anything. It's proposed to go right here. So, this zone is the drop-off area where it's open, so the mural would be in this area. This part of the wall here has mature vines on it, existing.
And what's on the wall where the mural would go right now? Does that have mature vines?
No. No, it has nothing. It's blank.
It looks like there were openings there at some time way back when, like, looks, do you own that?
Do we own the wall?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question about Phase 3. If I remember right, from the previous study session, there was another building to come? Is that true still?
We are pursuing a master planning process that is contemplating additional buildings on the site, but we, our current use permit does not include that, and we've not sought any entitlements for such a project at this point.
But it is something that you're considering at this point?
It's a very large site with a lot of exciting opportunities for us, so we are certainly exploring those opportunities. We're not anywhere near seeking entitlements for those at this point.
But with your intended growth in the number of students that you have, do you anticipate that you'd be able to accommodate them in the existing structure?
We envision the existing structure as a K through 5, and it can accommodate our kindergarten through 5th grade program. We have another campus in Oakland on Alcatraz that we envision would continue to house our preschool and our subsequent middle school program. So, yes, we do feel quite comfortable with that.
Okay. Other questions?
Chair Donaldson, before you move on to public comment, I'd just like to say a couple of things if I could. Concerning the issue about the Safe Route to Schools grant and how this path relates to that, that grant includes some improvements at the intersections of 43, 40, 43rd, 45th, and 47th Street and San Pablo, which would include the rectangular flashing beacons, I believe some bulbous of the street, and some extensions of the median islands to out into the crosswalk area to provide pedestrian refuge. The project manager for that grant application in the Economic Development and Housing Department commented at a meeting the other day that she thought that this path might result in heavier use of the 47th Street crossing as opposed to 45th Street than previously would have been the case because people, children, say, going in the triangle neighborhood up to the Center of Community Life site in the future would be more likely to walk along this path and then cut over at 47th Street rather than going over to San Pablo at 45th Street. So, I mean, I don't know if that's really going to be the case, but that was her perception. The other thing I just want to note is that we-
So, would that change what the design of the Safe Routes to Schools package is?
No, not particularly. No, I think it would still, the design would still be adequate. The design isn't really based on volume, it's just based on safety features. The other point I just want to make is that if the Commission does have questions about safety concerns for the police, we do have Sergeant Fred Dower with us here tonight. Sergeant Dower is on the Development Coordinating Committee, and he participated in the DCC discussion, so he's very familiar with the path and the security issues about it.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? We also, I would like to hear also from the landscape architect and also from Sergeant.
I guess, one more thing, these DCC comments, some of them are, I would say, costly, if not time-consuming. The two that I see, and maybe you can comment on, are adding the benches and tables and trashcans and stuff like that, is the, are you open to that?
We're very open to trashcans. We had discussed this with Maru, and I think that the thought, thinking was that the, we would provide the trashcans and that they would be included in the city's regular waste management service of the area. Since the school will have responsibility for maintenance of the path, that seems like a great addition.
Sure.
We're in favor. We would be happy to have a discussion about benches and tables and other amenities. I think, in general, our approach to this has been that this is a pedestrian path, it's not a park. And particularly given some of the safety concerns of neighbors related to the path, the idea of adding some of these amenities might accentuate some of those problems. So, and again, we'd be happy to talk about it, but our initial reaction is that, and then-
Let me clarify the DCC comment, if I may. And by the way, Maru was, I believe, on vacation when that DCC meeting occurred, so she was not there, but I was there, so she's working off my notes. The DCC members noted the absence of those kinds of amenities and discussed them, but their conclusion was that the only thing that was needed was trashcans.
Okay.
DCC is not recommending the benches or the tables or any of those other things.
And then the structural stability of the wall, has your design team looked into it?
We have not looked into that. Certainly, it's an important point, and we will pursue that as we move towards permitting related to the-
Is that the south wall or the north wall?
I believe the reference was to the entire wall.
The whole thing?
The wall that runs along the eastern, there's an existing concrete wall that we would propose, assuming that it's structurally sound, to keep in place. That would certainly be our hope, but we're also, we would want to be very careful about that for obvious reasons, so we will be exploring that as part of our-
It wraps around the south end and runs parallel to 45th Street for some little distance there, so that, right across the southern end of where the path would be. So, that portion of the wall obviously will need to be demolished.
So, and right now, along 47th Street, when the school is closed, the gates are closed and there's no access back there at all, is that correct?
That's correct. The gates, it's a closed campus during, well, pretty much all the time. The gates are open for pickup and drop-off at normal times, and then they're accessible by a code to a mechanized gate at other times.
And having that whole area open, have you discussed issues with that?
We have discussed issues with it. I think for us, it's a, it was a balance between, we don't anticipate a significant late-night or overnight parking load from the school on the site, so providing, ensuring the total security of parked cars on the site is not a high priority for us. I think during the daytime when there's, there'll be traffic and pedestrians and students and faculty present, we're not particularly concerned about the security risk in the parking lot. I think, again, we, the design that we propose is a balance, trying to strike a balance between minimizing the corridor effect of a fence along that portion of the path with the obvious safety issues.
Well, when the schools closed on holidays and weekends and summer, that would still be open to the public.
That's correct. The vehicular gate would continue to be closed, and the-
The pedestrian wouldn't.
That's correct. That's correct.
And you don't consider that a risk to security?
I wouldn't say that we don't consider it a risk. I think that we weighed that risk against some of the benefits of keeping it more open and settled on the design that's proposed. We are very cognizant of that risk, we recognize that. We recognize that we're in an urban environment, as is our other campus, and there are challenges around that.
What are your thoughts about gates on the path?
Great question. Maru's slide indicated that the gates were up to the Planning Commission. I think the information that we have in the conditions of approval-
I misspoke. The gates would require City Council approval, but direction, of course, from the Planning Commission.
Right.
So, the issue of closing the path at night came up last spring when we were negotiating and pursuing this use permit. The will of the Council was clearly to try to keep the path as open as possible, that gates were not desirable unless necessary, and the compromise that was settled on was that we would build the path without gates and with the Council to have the ability to ask us to add gates at a later time if that proved necessary. I think, in general, there are some potential benefits to gates, there are also some potential negatives. The gates would create a, you know, would create an island space that is not open and not accessible. Someone who really wanted to get in would be able to get in. It's an 8-foot wrought iron fence, we're not electrifying anything, so I think, you know, I think these are, there would be opportunities for people who wanted to get in to get in, even with the presence of gates. So, we're not, you know, we're happy to talk about it. I think we pursued this design because the condition of approval very clearly states that it should be open and should not have gates.
Chair Donaldson, can we ask Sergeant Bauer to comment on a couple of these items?
Absolutely. Could you? Thank you for coming this evening.
More specifically, obviously Chair Donaldson's questions about the gates, I know there's some comments here on the DCC about EPD's comment or feelings about the gates, but also about the idea that this lot is open to pedestrians but sort of shut off, so if something is happening in there at night, what's your comment on that? You know, EPD rolls around the corner, gates are shut, people are in there.
That, and also about the visibility from either end, considering the bend in the path, yeah?
Yes, well, good evening, Commission. It's a pleasure to be back again.
Thanks for coming.
No problem. So, I think one of the first issue is, and I think the question has come up, I think the openness about the gate and the fence, and we're talking about, you know, there's an existing fence all the way across the north side, and the concern is, if you don't have a gate here, you have a long fence, and then it just ends up open. So, this entire parking lot and the east side of the building is accessible 24 hours a day and creates kind of a, particularly a blind spot from San Pablo Avenue. And also, since 47th Street does have a, it is blocked, like, right past the school here, there's not a lot of traffic that comes, vehicular traffic that comes down there. Patrol cars actually have to turn around, go down, and make a U-turn to patrol that one block section, so. So, I would think if you were going to open the side here, which originally was proposed to have a fence along there and not have gates, if you were going to have this open, then it would make sense to have a gate along the north side and along the south side. The question then becomes who's responsible for opening and closing the gates and access to the gates at night. And currently, if, having been a K-9 officer and knowing, you know, sometimes you have to go over fences to chase people, if there's somebody in that lot there, the police will find a way to get in if we need to. And criminals can find, they can find a way to get in, but you want to make it as difficult as possible. So, I think our recommendation would be, the safest thing at night would be to have, would be to have gates here and have them closed off if you're going to, if you're going to have a path that runs through there. If I may just comment on the, and I think the landscape architect may be able to shed a little more light on it, the safety standards would be that the canopies of these trees would be no lower than 8 feet. So, if you're standing there, the lowest the leaves would come, the leaves would come would be 8, would be 8 feet to allow visibility. As well as lighting was also touched on. The Illuminating Engineering Society standards for lighting for pedestrian paths and pedestrian areas is that you should be able to see facial features from 30 feet away. You should be able to distinguish facial features from 30 feet away. So, you want vertical illumination as opposed to just, you know, if you're going to have lighting, either bollard lighting or any lights that are along here, you want to make sure that the tree canopies themselves don't block the lighting, so you can distinguish those features. And then, the last thing was the blind, was the blind spot at the bend here. There is, there is a blind spot, so if you're looking, if you're on 47th Street and you're looking south towards 45th Street, the further east you get and closer to the wall, the less that you will be able to see of this corner right here. So, it would be, it would be a little blind spot, but currently, and if you have, you know, existing canopies that are over 8 feet and you have an open fence along here, and the fencing remains what it is right now, which is wrought, you know, the wrought iron fence, you do have sufficient visibility from 45th Street and San Pablo to see into that corner. The only time you wouldn't be able to see is if you were on 47th Street and close to the wall, looking southbound.
So, you're, you've said that you think it's probably safer to have gates on this path in the nighttime.
Given this, given this design-
The location and-
It doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to open this parking lot and the east side of the, and the east side of the building, and Escoi Lo Belina with all of their windows and equipment and everything else that may be inside, it's very difficult to see this side of the building from San Pablo Avenue. The existing fences have done fairly well. To my knowledge, we haven't had, we haven't had too many problems there. So, I think it would make, it would make sense, it would make sense if you're not going to have a fence along the west side of the path on that area.
So, having said that, would it, if there was a fence on the north half, that would sort of take away the idea that you would need gates? If the 8, if the 8-foot continued- If the, if the eight, if the eight-foot continued on?
Yeah. If, if the eight-foot fence continued here, it would, it would mean you probably wouldn't need gates. It would allow access 24 hours a day. I mean, there are vandalism and loitering and noise concerns. I know that, that neighbors have, you know, if you have access to that path, you know, 20, 24 hours a day.
Well, could you comment, if I may, on like Temescal Creek Park where it narrows and gets down into, I know partially in Oakland there, but-
Yes.
I'm sure you were down there all the time. Let's talk real time. Are you, are you having these issues there where it's extremely blind, extremely long?
Having been the graveyard watch commander-
I drove with you one night.
Yes.
Yes, I know.
Working, working, we call dog watch, the graveyard shift for eight and, eight and a half years. There are a lot of problems with Temescal Creek Park given, given the design. It, the nature of the location kind of violates a lot of the principles of crime prevention through environmental design, natural surveillance. It does have territory, you know, territoriality, but, you know, it does, it doesn't allow for a lot of natural surveillance because of, because of the design, the design itself. Almost, I won't say every time I went into the park at night, but oftentimes, there would be people, there would be people in the park. You'd find remnants of homeless camps. You'd find, you know, people would be jumping the fences into the yards into Oakland as you came in, as you came in one portion of the, of the park, particularly when, if they knew that you were the police. You would hear a lot of, a lot of rustling and, and people, you know, people jumping over fences and the remnants of drinking or other activity.
So, how would this design, if it were to be fenced on the north side completely to create a corridor, how would that rate as, for the natural surveillance factor?
It would, it basically wouldn't, it would be about the same as, as it is right now or with the current design. If you have an eight-foot wrought iron fence and you have, and you have tree canopies and, and existing lighting, you know, adequate lighting that allows for, you know, facial recognition at thirty, you know, for 30 feet, a fence along here doesn't really decrease the, decrease the surveillance. What it does is allow access. You know, one of the, one of the principles of crime prevention through environmental design is access control. So, by putting a fence here and opening it up, you allow access to the area 24, you know, you would allow access 24 hours a day. So, it would, there would be no change in the surveillance, in the surveillance, but there would be a change in the, in the access to the area.
What about if it were a gate that was an extension of the existing, I mean, that is in the location of the existing gate so that the northern part of the path was open to the parking lot when the path was open, so that it was a large, you know, that part was open, but, I mean, the, the idea of extending a wrought iron fence up there sounds awful.
I, no, I think if, you know, there's, and they, you know, I think EBI has done a, has done a, you know, a nice job of, of, you know, securing their, you know, securing their area, you know, the area of the school. You know, I don't see any, any problem as far as access control, not having a fence along the west side of the path there during normal, you know, during hours. When you have, you know, when you have natural surveillance, you have eyes on the street. You have kid, you know, you have kids, you have staff at the school. You have a lot of people watching, watching, watching that. And so, that allows that area to be, to have natural surveillance during, you know, during those hours. So, if you're going to, if you're going, if you're not going to have a fence here, then that's fine during the day. But I think at night, it does, it does, it does cause some surveillance issues, opening that entire area.
No, actually, I was talking about if there were a gate that closed along the street side-
Yes, right there.
But when the path is open, it's still open in that area, but-
Yes.
At night, then when you, you could close the whole thing off from the top and the bottom?
If you put a, if you put a gate here and then a, and a gate here and close them, and close them at night or when, you know, or when school, when school is not in session, then, yeah, there's, I, there wouldn't be any, any issue with not having a fence here. Is that, is that-
Yeah. No, yeah, I'm just looking at some alternatives.
Would the police department be the party that would open and close the gates?
Uh, we really would not want to get in, get involved in having to open, having to open and close gates. If you're going to lock them, you know, having had to carry around the large key ring, you know, having a key to the gate would be great to allow, to allow access. You know, it's, it's really hard to carry your dog over an eight-foot fence, although I, although I have done it. Yes. You know, they, it's, it's not, it's not the up, it's the down, that's the problem.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, it would be another, it would be another key to have on the ring. We would like to have access to it if, if we need to, but we would not want to be the ones in charge of opening or, or closing the, the gate.
I would also add, it's private property, so that is subject to anaisment, and we would not be in favor of having city personnel managing private property.
It would be a Knox box.
Yes. Knox box access would be, would be, would be great, because then we wouldn't have to carry another key. We have, we have a Knox box key already. And I do, I do like the idea of the, and I'll touch on one other thing unless you have any other questions, but the painting of the mural here is one of the issues with this large, this large flat wall would be vandal, would be vandalism, obviously. There is existing vines. We would call, we would call that a living wall along the south side of the path there, which discourages vandalism. This large brick wall to, to vandal is like a large canvas. Fortunately, they, if you put something on a wall, if there's something already up there, it's less likely to be vandalized. There are some other things that you could do. You could put heavy texture. You could alter the texture of the wall, you know, to, and if you have a heavy texture, that discourages, that discourages vandalism as well as, as well as vegetation. But just having something painted on there already, the, some of the taggers, the more artistic taggers will not, will not paint graffiti on something if it already has, if it already has artwork on it. So, you may still get some, you may, you, there is the potential for some, for some graffiti, but it, the mural, along with obviously beautifying a large cement wall, would, would also discourage vandalism.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you have any last thoughts about whether this is a good idea or not?
Well, I think the question has come up about the proximity to San Pablo Avenue and having a mid-block path that's only a couple of, maybe what, 100, what's the-
About 230 feet.
200, I was gonna say about 200, 230 feet, 200 feet from, from San Pablo Avenue. It's, for those of you that had to, have had to walk from one end of Forty Fifth Street to the other, which my boots have done a, a lot, that's not really mid, it's not really a mid-block. So, you know, but if you're going, if you are going to have a path and a path is required, those would be our recommend, those would be our recommendations. But it does-
The recommendation would be to-
Any, any-
Increase the lighting.
Increase, increase the lighting and the landscape architect can-
Include gates.
Yeah. To, to include gates and to limit access during, during nighttime, during nighttime hours when you don't have the natural surveillance of the area to, to help, to help with security issues.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Good to see you, Officer Bauer.
Could we get a little idea from the landscape architect, Mr. Miller, about what you have planned for beautifying this?
Hi, Mr. Miller.
Could use beautifying, I can say, at this point.
Hi there. I'm Jeff Miller. Nice to be back, see you all again. And this is Aaron Parr. He's worked with me. And so, we both work together on the plan and can address your questions. Our, our thought is that we, we don't want to plant anything low. We don't want anything that's in the way, that blocks views. This is really an arboretum. It is for learning, not only for the students, but we hope that the, the trees will be named and be a resource for the community. We also see it as kind of a transition between a residential area and a school. And having a variety of trees, I think, kind of fits the back of a, of residential spaces, more like what most residences are. They have not a, a kind of colonnade of the same trees as if it was a boulevard. So, kind of giving a variety of trees. We like that idea. As far as the lighting, there, there are lights that are mounted along the walls as, as exist. There are also lights in the existing parking lot. You know, we think that the lighting is actually, there's quite a lot of light there. We haven't done a photometric study to say that you can see somebody 30 feet away, and maybe that, that's something that should be considered, but we think there's actually quite a bit of light in the area.
The lights are wall-mounted now?
They're, they're wall-mounted.
They're less than eight feet.
And they're kind of buried into the, some of them buried into the vines that are along the wall now. So, tho-, those, the vines need to be pruned. The bulbs need to be checked. It's probably a matter of, you know, upping the wattage of the bulbs that are, that are in those fixtures now, but they're, they're noted on the plan and they're, they're pretty consistently arranged along that wall. So, they're probably 30, 35 feet away from each other right now. They're, they're, they're pretty heavy-duty lights.
But you think increasing the lighting level there could be done with the existing spacing and the existing locations, so it wouldn't, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is glare to the neighbors?
Well, these are, these are kind of those hooded, hooded lights, so they're not, they're not uplights. They don't, they don't put light up. They basically put light down. So, I don't, I don't see them as real glary-type lights, you know?
No, and they exist now and they're very bright. I see them at night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of light in the area there. You know, we like the open fence on the, on the north side. I, I, I think, you know, we tried to design within the criteria that was established for us. So, the, the notion of gates is really by, we're just following the direction of the council to not put gates in. So, it's kind of a call that is a little bit beyond us at this point, is the way I feel.
And if you're choosing a variety of trees that are appropriate to this area and that would be educational and that, did you see an issue with the idea that they have to be limbed up to eight feet from the outset?
No. No, I don't see an issue of them being limbed up. Not at all, really. There's a lot of trees that'll work. We've got a, you know, unfortunately, this projection doesn't show the list, but-
We have the list in-
Oh, you have the list. The only one that I can see on that list that I think is possibly problematic is the toyon, because it's more of a shrub-like plant. But, you know, we, we included a lot of plant material there, so it, it may not be that each one of those plants goes into the final plan. It was plants that we were considering.
Are there any other landscape elements that could be used along the edge of the DG on the, I guess, the east side or, and/or the west side that would help with deterring people from wanting to go into the parking lot? Was there any discussion of that at all? I mean, we see that as just an open area for crime or problems.
Mm-hmm.
Once somebody just walks in there. I personally like the idea of having the gates open all the time, but what's to stop groups of people from going in there? So, from a landscape point of view?
I don't think any plant material would really do it, that, you know, wouldn't actually be problematic for children-
Right.
-as they, you know, entered the site. You know, I, I think what I like about the-
Poison ivy.
Pardon me?
Poison ivy?
Yeah, a little poison, itchy stuff.
Thistle.
What I like about not having the fence there is, you know, i- if there's a fence there, it just feels like a march to Guantanamo, this corridor there-
Sure.
-in a way, for me. And so, at least a part of it opening and, and doing it on the south side kind of makes a secure area in terms of the operations of the school. It, it functions quite well there. So, I, I don't know what really could be done at the edge of the curb line to discourage people from coming into the parking lot, other than another fence. You know, the thought of some furniture, but I don't think that really discourages anybody from doing anything except for, encourages them. And, you know, I think that's nice to encourage people, but.
The gate detail you have here, is that just for us to see, or is that for the gate that's over by the building?
That's for the gate by the building. That was to show what the character of the fence and the gates that we've drawn in the plan would look like.
Was there ever discussion of putting a gate in the eight-foot wrought iron into the path on the south side, just for access later or in case you need to get in there?
Into the south line, from the path.
Yeah.
I think they wanted to control, you know, the movement through one gate. There's, there's lots of issues with schoolyards and so many access points and control of kids, so having it at one point.
There was a comment with the, that the DCC made about the tree wells being a bit small. Can you, I think that they're probably drawn at about two, three? I can't quite tell on this plan.
They're the same size as the, the tree wells you see on the, on the street. So, it's a similar to a street tree situation, and we could handle it similarly to mitigate any compaction issues that would be there.
Well, I would note-
You know, lengthening, excuse me, lengthening those tree wells might be fine, I would think. You know, it would add a, a little more character to the path, a little more underplanting. Yeah, I-
I would note that our existing tree wells tend to be kind of substandard. And currently, you know, we, when we plant trees today, we try to put them in bigger tree wells with better soil conditions.
Using silvacels and things?
Right. I, I think lengthening them would be actually a nice idea, you know, because we'd have more, more, more plant material at the ground level that would be nice to look at, I think.
There's also the, there's sort of a dotted line around the drop-off zone. Is that for cars to park temporarily?
That's an indi-, just an indication of where cars would most likely pull up.
Okay. Yeah. It, it looks like you couldn't extend the tree wells all that long with planting material if that's where kids are getting out of the cars.
Yeah. I mean, you need to have the space for the cars' doors to open, but, but they could be longer. They could be a little bit longer, I think, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you for-
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Donaldson, I'd like to just take a minute, if I may, to put something up on the overhead.
Sure. Is this a pathway in our general plan? I was gonna ask that.
There's been a lot of discussion about whether or not this path is appropriate in this location. Is this, yeah, okay. And I'd just like to remind the commission that it is in your general plan. This is the pedestrian map from the general plan. There's other maps, a citywide circulation map and a bicycle map and so forth. I don't know how well you can see the colors in this overhead, but green, green paths that are shown on this map are pedestrian only, and the purple ones are pedestrian and bicycle. They're all over the city. The, the concept here is to try to close up some of these large blocks that we have to create a more, you know, fine-grained city, to make it more walkable and friendly for pedestrians. This is not, certainly not the only path, mid-block path in the city. We've got them, you know, all over the place. It's just part of the overall concept. I would also note that the same path and all the others are also in the pedestrian and bicycle plan that was approved unanimously by this commission last month and adopted by, unanimously by the city council last week. So, it's, you know, it is a concept that the general plan embodies.
Thank you. Okay. This is not actually a public here- Okay, this is not actually a public hearing, but I know that there are people that are concerned about this item, so I'd like to give anyone the opportunity to come up and speak for three minutes to the commission if they have concerns or comments on this. Is anyone wishing to come? Come on, step forward. There's a sign-in sheet which you can sign in after. You can just come up and speak.
Yeah, I walked in a little late. Good evening, my name is Kyrie Tan. I'm the property owner at 1072 through 1074A, Forty-Fifth Street. And my property is adjoining the path. And pretty much everyone who's here knows who I am and where I live, so I'll just cut to the chase. A couple of things I wanted to comment on was, so at the community meeting that we attended last month, we were presented with, and I believe Commissioner Cardoza was present, EBI did share a future plan for a multipurpose building that although it may not be submitted on at this time, I think that it's still relevant for discussion. And the reason being is that when that building is placed, and if it is placed in the position that we were shown at that community meeting, that it would be blocking the southern half of the path. And so the comments that Sergeant Bauer made with regard to being able to see, you know, visibly survey that path are going to be really compromised when or if that building is constructed there. So, again, although it's not, it hasn't been submitted for approval, it could change, but I think most of us are of the understanding that there will be a building of some kind that eventually will block that path. And so that creates an issue for security. I definitely feel that the gates, that the path does need gates after hours. As Mr. Horace mentioned, the path was, you know, being accessible at the northern part during the day gives you more of a sense of community, and I think that's fine for the day, but after hours, it's not necessary. And I've lived there for eight years, and at night, when that gate was open, we had a lot of problems with skateboarders. We're constantly needing a call, Emeryville PD, to get them out of there after hours. So I don't support not having gates there. As far as the gates, I just want to make sure that we, you know, don't just assume that the gates can't be put on some type of a timer. There are different types of lock systems out there, and it's not necessarily, we're not necessarily limited to manual locking systems. So I think that that's an option that still could be explored, that it's something that's done, maybe EBI can open that gate during the day, but that it closes at night, just like you see at a lot of park restrooms. You know, they're not necessarily being locked manually. And really, the letter that I sent earlier this week really outlines my safety concerns, so I won't reiterate those. But another thing I want to touch on, oh, I ran out of time. Thank you. Are there any questions or just?
I'll give another minute if you want.
You can finish up if you have one more point.
Yeah, another point that I wanted to make about the design itself is the use of the decomposed granite. It wasn't something that I brought up in my letter, but I do want to note that that material, depending on how fine it is, whether it's a larger aggregate or a finer sand, which is what I'm used to seeing in construction projects that I've been involved in, I have a real big concern about dust blowing around from that path. When the, you know, the maintenance folks that EBI currently uses, they use leaf blowers. And when they do the leaf blowing of the path to clean it and they blow that decomposed granite, it's going to be definitely an issue for my property. I have solar panels that I just installed and they only, they work well when they're clean. Windows are siding, so that's another concern for me as well. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? You can just come up, but afterwards, if you could sign in, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adriana and I live on Forty-seventh Street. And I want to thank the sergeant for saying exactly what I wanted to say. And I support having locked gates after dark at both ends of the path. I'm concerned about the safety of anybody who walks that path after dark. And I, as someone who commutes from work and walks on San Pablo Avenue every day, I know that San Pablo Avenue is populated enough that it's a safe, relatively safe, street to walk on. And we've had meetings with the police in the past asking about where is it best to walk at night, is it best to walk on San Pablo or Adeline as the main corridors through the neighborhood? And we were told that wherever there are more people and more cars, that's the safer place to walk. So I don't see that many people using this path, just because it's off the street. And so I'm concerned that if anybody would walk at night, because of the length of the path, the jog in it, that it would not be that visible a place. You wouldn't be able to tell what's around the corner. So, and the other thing I want to mention also, like the neighbor, that yes, the gates could be electrified and could be put on a timer to lock up at night at whatever time it gets dark. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you could sign in, that would be great, over there. Come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to thank Sergeant Dowar for being so thorough in his evaluation of the pathway. My name is Eric Gaskoin and I live right across the street from the...
Could you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. I live right across the street from the proposed pathway. The original plan for this path was to have a twelve-foot wide asphalt path with four feet of grass on both sides. There was to be a wrought iron fence running along the entire path. That type of plan was simple and would have served its function. When looking over what is proposed now, I see a few problems with it that involve safety and other troubles that the current design will bring to our residential neighborhood. Number one, this pathway needs to be closed at night. Before the real problems begin, there should be no nighttime in-or-out access. It should be blocked at night such as what had already been done to the Temescal Creek part that you guys just talked about. I do not want to see the pathway used as a nighttime destination for sleeping, doing, and dealing drugs, or a quick way to avoid the police detection after conducting some type of criminal activity. Gates on both ends of the pathway will do the job, locked at night, open during the day. This could be designed simply. Remember that this is a residential area. Please don't wait for something bad to happen and then revisit it when you can do it right now. Number two, opening the parking lot up to the pathway is a bad and potentially unsafe idea. Right now, there are only forty students at this private school. Almost all the students are from other cities and are driven to school. Between eight to nine AM, there are about thirty-five cars that enter and exit the school, which means within one hour, seventy cars pass through their entrance. In their Phase Three, they will have four hundred children being driven to school, which could mean that a minimum of six hundred trips could be made within that same one-hour period. On Forty-Fifth Street, I counted forty-nine pedestrians during the same time period, and most of them being Emory students, will more than likely use the path as a more direct route to Emeryville's public schools. Look at the plan. Having the parking lot open to the pathway will allow the school's car gate to be another shortcut where some young student will have the opportunity to get hit by a car. Number three, the plan calls for a gate to go across the middle of the school's property, basically cutting off the parking lot near the school's play area. Common sense dictates that removing so many parking spots for the making of the pathway and then again, removing the rest for the playground area, means that there's going to be a problem in the future. Do you mind if I finish up?
Go ahead.
Remember that you've allowed this school to have four hundred students and fifty faculty and staff. Right now, there are always about twenty-something spaces used every day. These remaining spaces are not enough parking for a school like of this size, and if you let the school cut off the amount of their readily available parking, you'll be hurting the surrounding neighborhood and businesses by putting unneeded additional pressure on our very limited street parking. Finally, using decomposed granite as the material for the pathway is not an acceptable standard for a public pathway, not to mention the dust and small rock debris that'll scatter onto Forty-Fifth and Forty-seventh Streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lindsay Corodas. I live on Forty-seventh Street. I just wanted to make a few, I'll try to keep them brief, quick comments. One, I wanted to say I like the fact that there is no fence on the northern end of this. I think it keeps it more open. It gives it a more community feel. That being said, I also think at night that it does need to be closed. I think it is a safety concern. I'm not going to use it at night. I think the people who are going to use it at night are, what's the PC term, sketchier? And I just think it's...
Suspect.
Suspect, it's going to draw that crowd. So I think it does need to be locked at night. How that's done, I don't know. There's been a couple ideas out there of how to do that. Just having it open during, having the school be responsible for opening and closing it means it won't be open on weekends. It'd be nice to have it open on weekends. That's when I'm home and would use it, you know, to go down to Arizmendi or stuff like that in that area. I would definitely use it during the day. So, that being said, I like that it's green. The landscaping looks great. The DG, I don't know. I know there's all sorts of different types of GD that don't create dust, so maybe that can be a solution. I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other speakers? Okay, Commissioner, I guess the big question is, one of the big questions is gates. Or if you want to just discuss generally, that's fine.
I have one thing before that. Charlie, could you tell us what the decision we made on the Pete's Coffee and the path that was going to be adjacent to the Artist Co-op?
I believe Miru has some information about that.
So at the time of the hearing, the staff's suggestion was to, for the Pete's to construct a pedestrian path. Then after the hearing and after taking public testimony, the commission revised the conditions so that the Pete's have to give us, give the city a dedicated easement for the path. In addition to that, they were to give us hundred thousand dollars for future construction of the path by the city. So that's how Pete's path was handled.
So the city has the money to do it at some time in the future?
That is correct.
If they wish to?
Yes.
And the reason this was put in, because the adjacent residents didn't want the path at this time because of vandalism problems they had in the past?
They had concerns, they had a variety of concerns.
And I think that Pete's was not in a position to build it at that point, if I recall correctly.
I think that's right.
I think there was some discussion about that.
Just so everybody knows what we're talking about here, that is, which one is it? This one. That's this pedestrian pathway right here, between Holden and Horton Streets, in the back of Pete's Coffee and Tea Headquarters. And between there and the Artist Co-op.
And that was to be open twenty-four hours?
The condition didn't address that issue.
Can, if you might, can we hear from, since Buzz was at this community meeting? Buzz, can you just give us some highlights, lowlights?
Well, there were, just same thing we've heard today. There were just people that had a lot of questions, particularly concerning the security on the pathway, and that was kind of the extent of it. There were two city council people there also.
Okay. Well, direction to the applicant.
I guess just looking at the DCC comments, the tree wells seem like a no-brainer. They know, Public Public Works knows best about tree wells and size, and I don't see that as an issue. And due to the comment from Sergeant Bauer, I think, you know, whether or not that path meanders or not really doesn't matter. It's really about the termination points at the front and the back.
Could you come to the microphone?
You'll have to come up there if you're going to talk. I like to tell cops what to do every once in a while.
For clarification on the comments, the proposed path with the slight bends in it as opposed to a straight path going up and then curving and then going straight, there wasn't, there really wasn't an issue of surveillance if the path meanders slightly within, you know, within those boundaries. That's what the, that was the direction of those comments.
Great. And then, then I guess more of a personal note, I thought the idea of just putting bollards was a better idea, keeping it open and, and I guess, taking our chances with the suspects. I also have lived in that neighborhood for ten years and have seen Temescal Creek Park change immensely, and my neighborhood changed immensely from literally walking my dog with a baseball bat to walking my dog without a baseball bat. And I've had to use it a couple of times in two thousand and five and six. So, things have changed there. Our neighborhood is doing a lot better in terms of crime, in terms of activity. It's great to see neighbors in Temescal, in the Triangle Neighborhood here tonight. It's great to have some outspoken leaders in that neighborhood, and this is how it starts, right? This is an opportunity to have a linear park, even though we keep calling it a path and a connection, this is a lot, really like a park with trees and kids and trash cans and poop bags for your dogs, which everyone has around there. So I see, I hope that someday maybe the bollard idea will be best, but considering the adjacent tenants and some of my nice neighbors saying it now, I think that probably, personally, I would think gates are probably the way to go with esquela bilingual, locking them up at night or after school is over, which really would mean they're locked up a lot and doesn't really help the general plan, which is to keep this open path going. But that's just the nature of the way things are today.
General plan doesn't really specify hours.
Right, okay.
It's just a line on the map.
Well, that's why it's general.
Right.
I agree with the pedestrians-only signs, good luck keeping the bikes out of there, but at least we can say you're not allowed to, and that always helps the police to say there was a sign out there. Also, the trash cans, I think, are very important. Seismic stability of the concrete block, you're probably going to have to do a survey on that no matter what. And otherwise, that's my, and I like, I wrote skip KFC. So when you were talking about safe paths to school, well, this path will keep kids from going past KFC on the way to school, and that's going to help too.
Vanessa.
I was also concerned slightly about the safety and torn, because I do very much want to see this mid, all right, it's not quite mid-block, pedestrian connection that is more enjoyable and green and also involves the school with the community in a bigger way, where San Pablo, it's very, it's just a big wall. So, one of the things I thought that certainly, I think, Gail, you brought it up, it just seemed quite obvious, if we did have a gate to have it at Forty-seventh Street just going across, and then keep the existing gate and another one down at the bottom. However, then if, unless we can have it open during the weekends, which is when the community would probably use it most of all, so if it could be on some type of timer and open and close, that would be what my condition would be, that it was accessible by the community during the daylight hours, seven days a week, if we were going with a gate. And it does seem like the community in the surrounding area is very keen on the gate, and I'd go with that. I very much liked, I think, yes, trash cans, some doggy bags for sure on each end would be appropriate. The mural is a wonderful idea. I think there's a few species of trees that you might want to reconsider, but I know this is just a pass, first pass on your list. this is just a pass, first pass on, on your list that probably won't be looking quite so good, limbed up to eight feet. And also, because of the potential of Phase Three and that there may be a building in the, in the, the south lot, I think having the gate, that's sort of another reason to have the gate, and I thought that was also good. I'm not, I think the permeable paving with the DG, I would certainly recommend adding in some, some kind of polymer or something to keep the dust down, but that's usually a normal practice these days anyway. And of course, the lighting has to be checked as well as the wall. So those are, that's how I would go forward.
I pretty much concur with Vanessa's comments, and Gail's and Frank's that were made so far. As much as I would really love to see this be open twenty-four hours a day, I'm not sure that we're there yet that we can do that. So I would rather play it safe. And also for the, the future, if another building does occupy that site, I think it just prepares things for that working. And this way, it allows, if we were to do it, to do a gate across the, just that one segment of Forty-second Street, Forty-seventh Street, that would allow the openness of the northern half during the day. So I think that's, and the other concern that I have, just kind of the nature of the shape of the lot, is the jog around the corner. It really makes me uneasy with the visibility. So, I think the gate is, is a solution. And then I concur with the other comments about the enlarged tree wells, the dog waste bags. The DG I'm not concerned about, based on my experience with the Greenway, and I walk that regularly, and I use the park benches there that are adjacent to the, to the DG. The benches aren't dusty. I don't notice like clouds of dust forming or anything like that. I don't notice dust in the, when you're making the transition to the concrete. So, I'm fine with the DG. One thing that's kind of, as a pedestrian, kind of one of my pet peeves is the meandering path. I really dislike the meandering path, and it's not how pedestrians walk. They, they don't want to do a slalom course, they want to get from here to there. So, if you want to do something that has a little more interest artistically, maybe, do, I would consider a larger arc kind of thing, like, I think on the Greenway, maybe between, between Sixty-seventh and Sixty-sixth, I think, has a large arc that it does add interest, but it's not, you're walking all over the place. And also, I'd like to see the path a little bit wider. A six-foot path, when you've got two people walking abreast and a third person coming along, just isn't, isn't big enough. I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to see a lot of kids walking to school on this. A lot of people out there walking their dogs, so. And what I have noticed is that people tend to walk in groups, usually pairs, often pairs, and sometimes more, more than two people. And as somebody that walks with two other people regularly, I'm, find that I'm the one that's usually kind of walking on the grass. So if we could make that, I think, like, seven and a half feet is kind of a standard width for sidewalks in non-residential, low-density residential areas, I think that would be more appropriate for this. But other than that, I really appreciate hearing from the officer and from the neighbors and for the quality of the, the input that you gave us. Thank you.
Well, I agree with what everybody else has been saying here, but I think as far as these gates are concerned, and I do believe we need them at both ends and that they should be closed after dark, that they should actually be open during the day, not something that is mechanically openable, but is wide open, so it kind of invites you to go into it. Now, that may make, make it a little more difficult to set up a security system on it, but if they're just gates that you can open certain hours and can't open other hours, I, I think it's going to discourage people from walking through.
I think that the path will be a nice addition. I agree that the meandering, especially if it's used by kids, you're going to just get desire paths trampling the ground cover, and that's not going to look so good. I think it's a lovely idea to have an arboretum-type edge to the school. I think it'll add a lot to the school. It'll be a great educational tool. And for that reason, I think it's really good to keep, keep it open on the north end, but I also think that it needs to be closable at night, because there's a lot of backs on that. It's not going to be that visible. It's, it's blocked on the north half of the block, and if there is another building in the future, that's going to be a problem. I think that a gate system can be worked out that could be mechanic, you know, remotely operated, a sliding gate of some sort. I think it should be not something that closes like, you know, like Buzz said, anyway. But I think that the path will be used during the daytime quite a bit. I think it'll be in addition to the neighborhood and to the school, and it will be a much nicer edge to the place than is there now with that big wall that's there now. So, it seems like we've got a pretty consistent direction, that the security concerns are legitimate at this point, and it will probably save the police department as well as everybody else a little bit of anxiety if we include the gates in the plan at this point. So I think we're sort of recommending to city council that that be a consideration, although I know this is a study session and we're waiting for the next step.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
For the applicant, I think we all kind of mentioned dogs and poop bags and stuff, but this is private property, and Esquela Bilingual will be maintaining this property.
We'll have an easement.
Pardon me?
We'll have an easement.
We'll have an easement, but they're taking care of it.
Yes.
They're landscapers.
Yes.
So, has there been discussion on whether or not dogs are even allowed in this path?
They're going to go there.
Can anybody comment? I know they're going to go there, but you can say, no dogs allowed, it's private property. I mean-
Well, I think we, I don't know, I think we could probably put that in the easement condition.
I think that would defeat the purpose in the neighborhood. There's so many people walking dogs.
I, I, hey, I have a dog that live in that neighborhood. I'm not, I'm, I'm asking them, they're the private property owners, what, you know, it's not just about dogs, it's about urine and picking up trash and providing the bags. It's, it's a different element.
Yes. The discussion of whether the path would only be open to pedestrians versus bicycles was, was part of our conversation before this. We didn't, we haven't discussed the issue of dogs.
Okay.
It's something we can, we can talk about.
Right, you know, certainly, probably speak for the entire neighborhood that it would be cool and right of mind, but we're just kind of throwing it out there like, it's happening. Woo, new dog park.
And I, I agree that bicycles, it's, it's, it's too narrow and dangerous, and I actually like the idea of increasing the width of the sidewalk and removing the wiggle woggle at the south end.
So Chair Donaldson, the, just procedurally, the conditions of approval allow the planning commission to approve the design of this path, but they do require city council approval of any gates. So I guess how this would work is, when it comes back for approval, is that you would presumably approve a design, and I'm hearing a consensus for gates. So you'd have a design with gates, and you would make a recommendation to the city council to approve the gates. I think they, they wouldn't have to approve the entire design, but they would have to approve the gates. I would also suggest as a condition of the gates, that if that's, you know, where we end up, that we simply say, set some kind of parameters for when they have to be open, when they have to be closed. And personally, I agree with Commissioner Cardoza, that I think they should be wide open when they're open, rather than just a closed gate that you can open, because otherwise you can't tell. But I think the condition should simply say that EBI is responsible for opening and closing them, and leave it up to them to figure out how to do it, whether they want to put it on a timer or have a person do it. Because I imagine they have security personnel, they probably have people who come by the school on weekends, you know, somebody could come by and open or close it. No, nobody comes by on weekends? Well, then you put it on a timer. I don't know. But leave it, I would recommend you, we leave it to them to figure out how to open and close them.
Sounds good. You could do some wonderful things with some gates, too. There's some really beautiful-
Yeah.
-ironwork out there now. Very artistic possibilities. Thank you.
And I only bring this up because it was the subject of considerable discussion last spring at the city council related to this condition. And the feeling was that there, at other pedestrian paths within the city that security was not, that are not locked at night, that it, while there had been concerns when those paths were considered, those concerns did not, were not borne out. And so that's where the, the compromise to have gates in the event that, that there was a security challenge at the, at this location. So I, this is a topic that, that got considerable, I mean, obviously it can be reconsidered, but discussion from the, at the time that the condition was initially imposed.
Right, and we, we originally said that they should be open as well, but we're hearing a lot of, you know, we're trying to balance things.
Well, I think what, what's sort of tipping the balance here, my perception is that it has a lot to do with the fact that the path is open on the north end into the school, and that without a gate at the north end, then the school is wide open? That's, that's, I'm hearing that that's kind of influencing your decision.
Oh, without a, yeah, without a fence on the west side-
Side, yeah.
That it creates not just a, a path, but a huge opening.
Right.
But at the same time, the idea of an eight-foot fence along a twenty-foot path through the middle of the block sounds horrible.
That's what you have at the south end.
Right.
The southern half of this is, that's what that is.
Yeah, I know. And it-
Good point.
Just to, well, and to speak to Charlie's point, this is a, this is a relatively small community resource in, in this school. This is not a school that's, that's exceedingly staffed. I certainly, you know, I recognize that we're property owners and you can impose restrictions on us, but I think it's important to, to remember that this is a, you, some of these may become quite onerous for the school in terms of, of operation. It's a school, it's open nine months a year, it's open during the week, and it's not staffed on the weekends, nor is that campus currently staffed in the summer. And to the extent that we're considering future buildings on the site, those would obviously come before the planning commission, and so to the extent that those buildings might pose security challenges for the path, I, it feels like that would be an appropriate time to consider changes to the path in order to secure those, those entitlements, so. Just-
Could I ask you one question? You're saying now that you're, you're willing to have no gates, and that would allow people into the parking lot on the north side?
That's, yes, that's-
That's acceptable to you.
That, we discussed that extensively within our community. I think the fact that there is a fence along the entire northern part of the parking lot-
Mm-hmm. Right.
You can take it off the tray.
Got it, okay, up here. We felt minimize, would minimize the likelihood that it would become a, that there would be a draw to be in the parking lot. There'd be nothing to go, it's not a shortcut, it's not a, it doesn't save you any time. Obviously, if you were there to commit mischief, it would-
Well, you could go rollerbo, skateboarding.
You could go skateboarding, yes. Yes.
But that's a risk you're willing to take?
That was where we came down on, on that, yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. We have one public hearing, the Hot Italian Sign Sign.
And I need to recuse myself from that because I live across the street.
We should probably wait for Commissioner Steinberg to return. Oh, here he is, okay. The sign application is Arlie Cassidy's project. However, she is at a class tonight, so Mira is going to present this on her behalf.
Thank you.
So this is a major design review for two signs. One is to legalize an existing sign, and one is a new blade sign. The location is Hot Italian. If you may recall, this was the former location of an Italian restaurant, Fusio, in Public Market next to the Pete's. So this is the sign that you probably have seen if you visited the, the restaurant or been near, been near Public Market. The sign dimensions are just a little bigger than what is allowed within the master sign program and what would be approved administratively. So it's a painted sign, there's no light on this, and it's a pizza stone letter pattern, and you can, and uplights are directly below the painted sign. And this is what it looks like. This is the proposed blade sign. This does not exist, this will be new. And you can see the sign dimensions, and this, this will be white vinyl letters, and the bicycle will also be in a vinyl texture. And you have the black background, this will be internally illuminated, and it'll be, it'll have about an eight-foot clearance. And this is the location of the blade sign in respect to the door. There are certain citywide design guidelines that apply to the signs, and they are to do with compatibility, consistency with the area, character, visibility, and readability, and all the above guidelines are met by these signs. There's one additional guideline that applies to the sign lighting, and that is to discourage uplighting in order to require dark sky compliant fixtures. So we are recommending that any lighting installed for the painted wall sign be placed above the sign and directed downwards. And in the draft conditions of approval, we have included this. So like I mentioned, the maximum amount of signage that is allowed by the master sign program is, the sign exceeds it by about a 1.3 square feet per linelife, and that is why it's in front of you. So that, my, our recommendation is to approve the major sign permit with the condition regarding the sign lighting be directed downwards. Are there any questions? The applicant is here, if you have questions from them.
So the painted sign is existing.
Yeah, so-
And it's slightly larger than allowed?
Yes, slightly larger.
Is it larger, or is it larger when you add the blade sign? I mean, the square footage when you add the blade sign is larger, but as it is, it's within-
No.
That's right.
It's larger to begin with, the letters are larger.
No, no, it's, by itself is okay, but when you add the blade sign, then it exceeds the cumulative sign area that's permitted.
The area, but what about the height? Is there a two-and-a-half inch difference in what's allowed and what's actual?
I think the, I think it's not a matter of the vertical and horizontal dimensions, it's a matter of the total square footage. And also, the width, I believe, can't exceed seventy-five percent of the frontage of the store. The existing sign doesn't exceed that either. Also, we note that the sign was put up without seeking approval, and if they had sought approval before they put it up, we could have told them to shrink it slightly, and then they wouldn't have to be before you tonight.
What was this question about lighting? Is it lighting of the big sign?
Yes.
Right, let me see.
There's no lighting on the sign currently.
I thought there was a, if you, look at your plans.
There's proposed uplighting on the sign, and-
There is proposed uplighting now.
But it doesn't show it on any of these plans.
No.
Nor if it's saying.
Well, we wouldn't want it anyway.
If there's future.
No, you can kind of see it on sheet number two. There's black on black. Lights. There's one, two, three, four, five of them.
Oh, I see, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so, just right below, if you look at your plans, you, you can't see it here, but they're, they're like, here on page two-point-oh?
Mm-hmm, two-point-oh.
Yeah, we got it.
We found them. They were hidden, but we found them.
The concern is that the lights are at the bottom pointing up, and they should be at the top pointing down, in order not to-
Well, if they're at the top pointing down, they'd have to go much further out and point back at the sign, wouldn't they?
Why?
Otherwise, they're lighting the path below it.
That might be what they're doing now, who knows? It doesn't say there are lights.
Well, no, I think if they're angled towards the sign, whether they're at the top or the bottom, they're going to be at the same angle pointing down.
I think the whole reason for not having at the bottom is that they would shine into apartment windows that are in the neighborhood.
No, it's dark sky, it's, it's-
Pollution.
Light pollution.
Oh, okay.
Okay, are there any questions? Was that the-
Yes, that's-
End of the presentation? Is there any question for Mira? No? Any, should we have the- Should we have the, does the applicant want to say anything?
Basically, my name's Dean Toll, I'm with Toll Graphics, and I'm responsible for painting the sign. Basically, what happened was, the sign, we knew that it was supposed to be 91 square feet total for the space, and I was assuming that the painted sign was part of the whole master sign program, since it was shown on the drawings and so on. And so we applied for the permit for the electrical sign, and felt obliged to put the wall sign on there to show the total accumulation, because when we measured up the blade sign and measured up the wall sign, we came out to 90.9 square feet, so we were fine. Where the mistake was made is that we didn't measure both sides of the blade sign, and it wasn't an intentional trying to sneak a big sign past, it was just a mathematical error. And we basically are within 96 point, I forget what the percentage is, but we're about 3.7% too large. So it's pretty minuscule, and you can see the last, the last page of the drawings shows the existing sign versus what the sign would look like, were it reduced by the 3%, and it's pretty negligible.
We are recommending approval. We think it's fine. It's just that it requires planning commission approval, because it's...
With top lit, lighting, rather?
Yes, that, that's our recommendation.
Well, I'm delighted to see a sign that actually has front lighting instead of interior glow lighting.
Uh-huh.
Wish we had more of them in every room.
Any other, any other questions, comments, discussion, motions?
Oh, is this public comment?
You might, you might want to hold a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, is there anyone, thank you very much for the information. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? No, seeing no one, close the public hearing.
Move approval with top lighting.
I second that.
I would like to make a substitute motion, that, or just making sure, I'm not sure if we need to make a motion, that in the conditions of approval, when a new sign is built, that it revert back to the master sign plan, or painted, if ever, we hope you're there forever, right? Because I notice on F, right, compliance with approvals, application to successors and interests, the conditions shall apply to any successor in interest in the property. So would it be wise to say that it needs to revert back to the master sign program if a new sign is installed? Or would they be granted the grandfather of their 3.6%?
Well, typically, I hadn't really thought about that, but typically, when a sign is approved by the planning commission, and then someone proposes to swap it out with a different sign of the same size that would normally require planning commission approval, we consider that a substitution of an existing sign that was already planning commission approved, and we typically would approve that then at a staff level, without bringing it back to the commission. So I think that would probably happen here as well, so it might be wise to include that in the conditions, if you think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Or any future sign that exceeds the master sign program should, has, needs to come back to the commission for approval?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
So it doesn't continue to balloon and balloon?
Well, we wouldn't let it be any bigger at a staff level, but we would let it be the same size.
Just to clarify, if they had met the master sign requirements, they wouldn't be here now.
Right, and actually, they could have done that if they didn't, just didn't put up the blade sign. However, blade signs, well, the way our current code is written, anyway, blade signs all require planning commission approval, so they would have been before you for the blade sign.
Anyway.
I like blade signs, yeah.
I do, too.
I'll second the amended motion.
With the downlighting, yeah.
So you, actually, you're accepting that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah.
That was seconded by Commissioner Steinberg?
Yes.
Right, and the secondor also accepts it? You got the amendment? All right, you ready?
Ready.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Flores?
Yes.
Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved, this decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Are there any commissioner comments?
I'll just comment that, yeah, everyone knows I'm leaving, so you can have a big party for me next time, because it will be my last meeting. Reiterate my email that, you know, it came as a little bit of a surprise, but did find a great place in Oakland, so maybe I'll see you guys on the other side, or I'll come back to this side, I'm sure.
I'd like to move that we have a party at Hot Italian. Hot Italian.
That's not a bad idea, I like that place. I've been open at night.
Would be a very nice send-off, Italian style.
I would like to point out, he already has an Oakland-ish decal on his...
Well, I'm pretty pro-Oakland, anyway, but, you know, the two cities work together, as Charlie well knows, and having worked there for many years, and I'll probably be applying for the Oakland Planning Commission this year, and the Port Commission, so I'm hoping to sit and do some work, and maybe we'll see each other on the, at the table again.
Thank you, all right. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.